All right, evening ladies and gentlemen. Tuesday, February 4th, first hearing is case number 20-01. Notice is hereby given to the Board of Appeal to town of Norwood, Public hearing room 12. This was originally on January 7th, 7:15 PM. On the request of Pathway Vet Alliance LLC, Norwood Animal Hospital with respect to property located at 437 Washington Wallpole Street, excuse me, in the general business district. This applicant requested a special permit under 6.2.16 of the zoning bylaw to allow a non-internally illuminated double-sided standing sign fabricated of carved sign foam and mounted on two aluminum posts at five and a half feet of overall height. The sign measures three feet, three inches by six feet at 19.5 square feet. The sign will be set back five foot, five foot, six inches from the property line to the leading edge of the sign pane to read "Norwood Animal Hospital, number 437." Plans have been on file with this application in the ZBA and may be viewed any time, normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4. All right, so what happened was, if I remember correctly, you guys came in on that date, but there was improper notification given, so you had to re-advertise.
Correct, so we did. So here's the affidavit and the tear sheets.
Okay, can you just do, I'll just say your name.
Sure, for the record, my name is Heather Dedco, 27, Old Meeting House Road in Auburn, Mass.
Okay.
Chad Gerber, the practice manager at Norwood Animal Hospital.
Okay. You guys own the buildings or own the property?
No.
No, no, I'm with the sign company and he's the manager of the practice.
Okay.
Still Christian, la zing?
I'm sorry?
Dr. Coppin?
Yes, yes, yes.
These are the new dates?
Correct.
All right. So I do have the affidavit here for the dates of 1/16 and 1/23. They're stapled together, but if you could just look at the first one and then pass the next one on to Mr. Malveer Hill, please.
Oh, they're all stapled together?
Yeah, they're stapled.
Got the right dates. January 16th.
They have the 23rd of January, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we pretty much went over everything the last time. I don't think anybody had an issue with it with more of a technicality than anything else, so if, do you want to explain anything further that we haven't already gone over?
I don't think so.
You think, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Reese didn't have an opportunity to hear the first round, I don't think. You weren't here in the first, so Mr. Reese might like to hear what it's all about.
I'm just, is there a sign currently there now?
There is not, no. There had been one previous, years and years ago, that was taken by when they widened the road. I think there's a little history with that. So there had been one a number of years ago, but we couldn't find much record of it, but...
And what's the distance, the distance required by the bylaw from the street to the location, the proposed location?
Is it, how far are you?
Five foot, five and a half.
Five and a half feet.
Five foot, six inches, correct.
I think it runs, what, 15? Do you know whether you can make it closer depending on the scale?
The size, the overall square footage. So we do believe that the 19 and a half square foot is appropriate for the five-foot, six-inch setback, because as you move it closer to the street, it needs to be reduced. So I think 30 feet, 30 square foot you can have at that setback. Yep, about 30 square feet.
You said it's not illuminating, right?
Correct.
So not be located within 15 feet of the property line. However, the SPGA, which would be us, may allow a standing sign as close as five feet, provided that for every foot the standing sign is within the 15 foot, there's a corresponding reduction of two square feet in the sign. What's the square foot of the sign?
19.5.
There's a sign on the building too, right?
Yes.
I think the math adds up, Mr. Chairman.
I think so.
All right, we'll go with that.
Yeah, because the standing sign can't exceed 50 square feet and you've obviously brought it down, so it looks like the distance and the sign signage are all right.
I'm fine with it. It's a great sign. I'm sure it looks beautiful on the property.
I think so. Any other questions?
Just a quick one. It's not illuminated.
Correct.
And there's not a spot on it.
No, there's nothing proposed at this time for any kind of spotlight on it.
Okay.
No.
Pretty simple.
Yeah, one of the concerns I had was lines of sight, but it's not near the exit or anything, that's what's not, you know, I gotta look around it to get out of there because that's a danger.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anything from the audience? Okay, pleasure of the board.
Motion to close?
Second. Second by Mr. Murray. All those in favor?
All right.
All right, five, nothing. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion to approve with the third, second of Mr. Malveer Hill. All those in favor?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sorry about the snafu last time.
No, it's okay. It's all right.
It was our fault.
I know, it was our fault, yeah, and I totally understand it.
Worth the wait.
It was, it was.
Take care.
That was an easy one.
All right, all parties independent. Nice to see you.
Thank you, nice to be seen.
Next up, case number 2004. Notice is hereby given to the Board of Appeal, called the Public Hearing Room 12, February 4th, 7:15 PM. On the request of Irene Realty Trust, also known as David Spiegel, with respect to the property located on 596 Providence Highway in the Highway Business District. This application requests a special permit under section 3.1.5 of the zoning bylaw to allow D-1 special permit for open sales, storage of automobiles, H-2 special permit for auto repair and service conducted within a building, and washing and cleaning of automobiles limited to vehicles sold on premises, K-10 special permit for rental of automobiles. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the zoning board, may be viewed during normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4.
We need the notice. He's got the notice.
Right. Thank you. All right, so I do have the affidavit. I'm looking for the advertisement on January 9th and January 16th, please.
They're highlighted in yellow.
I saw that.
I have 192.
192.
19.
January 9th.
I think I have.
Sorry. Okay, you got the 9th.
I got 9th, yeah.
So all right. All right, if you want to just introduce yourselves and please...
My name is James Hilliard and I'm here tonight representing the petitioner, Irene Realty Trust, David Spiegel trustee. With me is Matt Smith from Norwood Engineering and on my right from Enterprise Rent a Car is Mr. Doug Valeri and with him is Ms. Kate Onier. We all set to start?
Yes.
Okay. The property in question is at 568, 570 and 596 Boston Providence Highway. You may know it as formerly Cap World, which is the most recent use of it. And prior to that, I believe it was Mr. Tux. The request tonight before you is for, as you've already read, Mr. Chairman, is open lot sales, storage of automobiles, for the auto repair service conducted wholly within a building, washing and cleaning of automobiles limited to vehicles sold on the premises or rented, and a special permit for the rental of motor vehicles. The proposal is on, is for a building to be rebuilt of approximately 6,400 square feet. The land in question is about approximately 1.3 acres. The proposed tenant is, excuse me, is Enterprise. Enterprise is the largest rental automobile agency in the country. Every so often you hear T. The Hertz or somebody else wants to be number one or want to number two, but Enterprise is clearly the single largest. The use they want to put to the property is for two main purposes. One, to lease vehicles, as they were doing in Westwood recently and they were closing that. And the second is to sell vehicles. The vehicles that they would sell from this location would be the vehicles that they had rented. And after they came in after a certain number of miles, they send them to either Bridgewater or a facility in New Hampshire where they get serviced and brought into a condition where now they will sell them. So then they would send some of those, but they would come down into Norwood, into this site. The site itself would be used primarily to clean them, both rentals and sales, meaning washing them and cleaning them, and setting them up for either rental again or for sales. The building that we're proposing meets all zoning dimensional requirements. The hours of operation would be on rentals, 7:30 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday, and 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Sunday.
Oh, I'm sorry, inter, what'd you say, on Monday to Friday, 7?
Monday through Friday would be 7:30 AM to 8:00 PM. Eight to five on Saturday, nine to five on Sunday. The auto sales would be 10 to eight, Monday through Friday, 10 to six on Saturday and closed on Sunday. One of the issues I know that neighbors would be concerned about, as I'm sure I would be concerned about if I lived in the Ponset Street extension, is whether or not there'd be any ingress or egress out of this site onto Napont Street. And the answer is no, there won't be. The only ingress, the ingress and egress primarily is going to be from Route 1 into what we now know as, know as Savers, and there will be a pathway that they will go into the Savers and then they will access the location that's actually on the map, which we'll talk about in a minute. The use of the land is very little different than what has transpired in the past with Cap World and prior to that, Mr. Tux, both retail. The circulation on the automobiles, again, will be off Route 1, back onto Route 1. There'll be very little mechanical work done, but I had to ask for a special permit because it's required for any mechanical work. There's very little mechanical work done because that's done in Bridgewater and it's done in New Hampshire. And if anything is done, it'll be in an enclosed building and I know you've been through this many times with garages, when they have to have their doors closed every time they work on a car. The auto detailing, whether it's washing or cleaning, is not open to the public. It's just for the vehicles that belong to Enterprise, that they'll be using on the site. There'll be a total, on that plan that you'll see, a total of 96 spaces for both parking, storage and display. The daily rental, again, will be just for the cleaning. There'll be selling, there'll be, again, renting, no full service, no fueling, there'll be no gasoline, no oils on site. They anticipate to have between 18 and 20 employees and of the 18 to 20, they would anticipate half of those would be, if Norwood residents are interested. They pay quite well. I was quite surprised at the level of payment, but they pay quite well, in fact, better than I think most businesses of this nature would. One needs to inquire to find exactly what that would be. The social, economic, community needs, the location of this property is in a highway business zone. It's zoned for exactly what it is that's being done. Despite the location of building a residential district, which it has all this time, it's not served by any residential roads and it's fencing and that's currently on the property. The circulation, as I've stated, is exclusively, not exclusively, but for the most part is Route 1 in and out, certainly not in the Ponset Street. The utilities and public services are currently on the site. They'll be, therefore be connected to the existing utilities located on the existing commercial property. There'll be little or no environmental impacts. The site design provides a substantial improvement actually from the stormwater management. Current stormwater flows directly into the storm drains and discharges to the wetland near the airport. Proposed stormwater management system will include an infiltration system that is designed to have all stormwater traffic recharge. Stormwater management system will include treatment units to remove pollutants from the stormwater. The site design also includes a detention system to provide there'll be no increase in flow rates prior to discharge into the wetland. Land use compatibility, it's, again, the land is zoned and used for commercial and retail businesses. Fiscal impacts, there'll be a brand new building built and the brand new building will be assessed at the commercial rate, which is almost twice the residential rate in Norwood, so that would be a fiscal impact in Norwood on the plus. And on the process, I wrote a letter to the director butters, invited them to discuss it if they had any questions, and I do know some of them came to town hall, inquired about the project. And I would finally just say that I believe that you would have to find that this is not a substantial detriment to the existing use in the neighborhood or in the neighborhood in comparison to what has been used in the neighborhood prior to this. And based on that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
A couple of things. I do want to make the audience aware, I wasn't expecting this bigger crowd, you know, obviously you're more than welcome, but I will certainly entertain questions from you guys. Just try to control the repetitiveness of the questions. That's all I ask. You're more than welcome to ask whatever you want, okay? But if this gentleman asks one question, I don't expect somebody over there to base in following up with the same question. We might be able to nullify some of the concerns. I am aware of one of them, you know, early on, so let's see how it goes and we'll play it by ear. The only thing, other thing I ask is when I do ask you to stand and call and ask your question, if you can just state your name and your address, please, just for the record. All right, so a couple, one thing I do want to read into the record, because I do feel it's relevant, is a letter from Al Getz, the conservation agent. It's addressed to myself and Al says, "I have had the opportunity to review the proposed project at 596 Boston Providence Highway. As the proposal includes onsite washing of vehicles, the project will require a drain connected to an MDC trap sewer connection, as well as the filing of notice of intent under BEP and Town Wetland bylaws regulations." So if anybody's concerned about the environment, that issue was obviously going to be addressed. The other question I had before, you already covered the hours of operation. Do we have a rough estimate or a definitive number in terms of how many car rentals are going to be down there?
How many would?
How many cars are going to be down there for rent and even more so, how many cars are going to be down there for sale?
So the proposed plan right now is 68, I believe it's 68 car sale spots and 20 car rental spots. We run about 120 vehicles out of that store, or we will run about 120 vehicles, but we sit at about a 90% occupancy rate. So the vehicles are rented. We don't make money if vehicles are sitting on a parking lot.
True. Okay, the other thing, I did speak with one of the neighbors in regards to this project. I do think, I can't speak for everybody, but I do know one individual's issue, and I believe several of these people's issue, is somehow a rumor or a story got leaked out that there was a potential of, and help me on the name of the street, is it Napont Terrace?
Napont Street.
Napont Street.
Napont Street Extension.
Right.
Correct? You guys all live there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so now you know.
Same house?
So the rumor, the rumor that circulated out, and I'm not sure how, and I'm not sure this individual knew how either, but there was a rumor that at some point, whether it's Enterprise or Mr. Spiegel himself or whomever, was going to try to propose a throughway of the Napont Street Extension to make that a through street to allow access into this area. So if you want to address that...
Answer is simply this, if the board feels, and the neighbors obviously feel, that that's probably the thing they don't want the most, the board can condition approval on no access or ingress from Napont Street to this project.
I'm aware of that, but was this part of the plan?
No, no, if you look at our plan that like submitted and the plan that Matt's going to hold up, there is no entrance or egress. You can see where the little cul-de-sac is.
Yeah, this is cul-de-sac.
But there's fencing that comes down both on the south side and on the east side. The only entrance is from, where you come down off of...
All right, so there's no plan, there's no plan to ever try to access that as a through street?
There's no plan to access it as a through street and there's a note on this plan that says existing fence to remain, which would, again, block any traffic from going through.
Right, no, I understand that. I would have to...
There's never a plan to do that.
There's never a plan to do that.
No, and you can condition...
I'll get to you, I'll get to you in a minute. You're first, I promise. All right? Okay, so as long as, as long as we have that at the table, you might have to answer a couple more questions, but I think that will hopefully alleviate some people's worries of a massive traffic increase on the Napont Street Extension. So I think I'm all right, but 68 rentals and 20 cars for sale. You're going to have the fence up. Is there any improvements that need to be done to that fence? What kind of shape is it in? I saw it at night.
Terrible.
Okay, no, I don't need that, please, just give them, let them answer at first and you guys can certainly...
I don't know the condition of the fence. If the fence is not in good condition, if it's, I mean, it's an aesthetic issue. If it's not in good condition, I can represent to you that Mr. Spiegel will make that fix or repair or replacement.
Okay. Mr. Malveer Hill, if you'd like to start.
On the fence, Jim, well, backpedaling a little bit here regarding the fencing, this was formerly Zoppo's property, the old...
Not really.
Zoppo's building. Well, Zoppo owned the property when it was redeveloped.
No, Zoppo owned, which is now Savers, what used to be Sims and so on.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Actually, if he did, it was a long time ago.
Yeah, when it was brought in there, when, God rest his soul, Jack tried to put in the great American pub down there.
Yep.
That fence was Zoppo's. Does David own that fence or who owns that fence?
I can tell you now that David does because he owns both properties.
Okay, good, that was my question, so, yeah, and again, it was, for years it was falling down.
Okay. If it's falling down, I can tell you that it will be repaired or replaced or whatever.
Okay. You're not going to try for an off-ramp entrance in there because again, just by way of history, it's been tried before?
We would never get an off-ramp.
Mass Highway said no to that.
Mass Highway would never approve it.
Exactly. Matt knows that full well, so, yeah. As far as the washing of the vehicles, are they going to be hand washed or do you put a machine wash or car wash in there?
They'll be bucket washed.
So there would be no automatic, like vacuum dryer?
No.
Like a jet engine?
No, the blowers, no.
Yeah, nothing?
They will not.
Okay. Al Getz has brought in the concern about the stormwater drain.
We will deal with that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, obviously you can't get Pasco on that. As far as the lighting of the property, again, this team with Hilliard and Smith have been before the boards with different auto dealers and Jimmy, you know where I'm going with this lighting issue. Is this going to be Fenway Park at night?
Well, Norwood has its own lighting regulations and the candle power and the back wash they have, so nothing can leave. The light shines in, doesn't shine out.
Right.
And that's all controlled by the bylaws and I don't think it's ever been an issue because we've complied with them at all times.
The hours of operation for Cap World, will they open late at night, like 8:00, 9:00 at night?
I don't know.
No, no, we suppose it's...
Don't know, sorry.
So, no problem. And then, one more time, your hours are Monday through, Sunday through Sunday? Are you open Sundays?
Car rental is, car sales is not.
Okay, and then at night, what's the closing?
The latest is 8 o'clock on sales, yeah, 8 o'clock, Monday through Friday, 8 PM.
And then, 8 is, and the same with the rental, 8?
No, the rentals are, the rentals, I'm sorry, you're right, they close at 8, that's right. Monday through Friday, 8 o'clock on the rentals and then 5:00 and 5:00 Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, and then, do you have a new traffic flow down there, Matt, for the traffic that's going to be generated out of there when people pick up a car to go through the trampoline parking lot or again, they're going to come right out to Access Road?
They could either, they could go right out to Access Road by the existing driveway that's there, or they could go through the parking lot by Ty Law's launch and then out onto Route 1, so...
Okay, yeah, Jimmy, the only thing I was looking at was the fencing. And then I'm just more of out of curiosity, do you see this little splinter here that goes into 538's backyard? It's a little sliver of manufacturing into the single family zone, this little piece right here?
I'm sorry.
Any, yeah, any reason that's there, Matt? I mean, that was one of those...
That's how it was zoned.
I know, I'm just wondering the...
Yeah, the zone line is not, is different than the property line.
Right.
I don't, that's...
Why does it protrude into the single?
It was just, I think that's, I think the zoning was just made kind of 90 degrees, it goes this way, that way and that way, and then the property lines had a difference, so they must have not, I don't know how that zoning came about, but I would imagine that they made the zoning a straight line, 90 degrees, and then the other property line just, they didn't follow the property line.
Last question on vegetation for the fencing, is there any vegetation, like trees or shrubbery on your side of the fence that you're proposing?
No.
Or nothing?
No, we're going to look at the fencing and the fencing is to block the view looking in and aesthetically same way.
Okay. What's that, what's that green? What's the green signified?
Green is just something that's not going to be building or pavement. The yellow is pavement and walks, the blue is the building and green is just...
So that's the woods in between the end of the street and the fence?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's, obviously it's wet down there, Matt, because you know behind the old pond, that's the wetland down there.
Yeah, the weed flag, yeah.
So, that's going to be a pretty decent job for the stormwater drain, right? You've got to do it all because Cap World is, isn't it gravel down there or is it hot top type of thing or?
Yes, it's all hot top, it just goes directly, actually, a lot of the Cap World drainage goes into Napont Street.
Right.
And what we're going to do is we're going to reroute it, we're going to recharge it on our site, we're going to detain it and then it's going to tie into the drain system that goes down this way towards Access Road and then across Access Road.
Good plan.
Yes, I think it'll be a big improvement. We will not be doing any work in Napont Street, no utilities will come from Napont Street, all utilities will come from the commercial land.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have too much. I haven't rented any cars lately, but does Enterprise still operate their other plant that was further down Route 1?
We do.
And do they continue to operate that?
We will.
Will you be actually renting cars at this spot or just at your old spot?
So the site down the street, this will offset some of that business. That site's so busy that we could use a second operation, rental wise.
Would it be your anticipation that the greater amount of the renting would remain in the present site or do you have any thought about that?
Yeah, that site will be, remain, the main branch, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that site will be, remain, the main branch, yes.
And I think if I got the numbers right, you anticipated something on the order of eighty-eight cars on site, I think you said sixty-eight, twenty, that'd be the deal?
Yeah, it's ninety-six.
Oh, you were saying it was within the ninety-six that's available there?
Correct.
Ninety-six is allowed, or ninety-six is not?
Ninety-six total.
Ninety-six is what you have.
Yes, total proposal.
And you anticipate using a good part of it?
That's total storage, display-
Right.
And parking.
Okay.
Right, okay. Is the display area going to be separated from the regular parking area in any fashion? Or are the cars just gonna kind of weave in and out, or how's that gonna work?
Well, one of the issues, of course, is it, it's Route One addressed, but it's not on Route One.
Right, exactly.
We're gonna pull those cars right up onto the sidewalk, as you see, a lot of them on Route One. So, the display, I will assume, is gonna be made in accordance with people arriving at the site.
Right.
Then they will see them. It's not gonna bring them in.
Right, right. And I think you said there were sixteen employees anticipated?
Roughly sixteen to twenty.
You mentioned that you would send out some communication to the people in the area. Was any actual meeting held?
No, this is a letter that I had, I had sent to, I had sent to the abutters, offering to discuss it, offering to meet, and so, offering to discuss with any plans. And then I know that several people showed up here at town hall and spoke with Ramonda.
Did you speak to anybody, Jimmy?
No, I did not.
That's what I was gonna say, you indicated that people could contact you at your office, but I take it you, you didn't receive any?
No, no.
That's all I have.
I, I realize that doesn't mean, that's not a lack of interest, I know that.
I'm just curious if you had.
Sure, just wanna do it as a courtesy.
Right, I guess all I have is, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Easton, can we add in?
Yeah, I would like to, the, the, can you show me where the, the Cap World and the, it's a pizza place that went out of business of Mr. Tux, is that all apart, is that all?
Yes.
Yeah, it's right there.
Where, where are those two buildings, the Cap World and the-
Well, I think this is where the Mr. Tux was, and then this is a, a small building that looks like, it's a wooden building, but it looks like an old garage, and then there are some other buildings here that's more Cap World. But Mr. Tux was here, then it was a pizza place most recently. These are storage shed-type buildings, and these are all kind of storage.
So, are all those buildings in blue there now?
Yes.
Okay, and are they all gonna be torn down?
Yes.
And what, what is the size of the building that's gonna be built?
The size of the, that's gonna be-
Sixty-four hundred square feet.
And do we know what are, the total of the buildings that are there now?
I don't have that, sir, no, I didn't, didn't calculate that. Let me, let me look at one segment.
There's one, two, three, four, like six or seven buildings that will be torn down, and one building of sixty-four hundred square feet will be built?
That's correct.
Is it one floor?
Yes.
Yes.
And do you know how high that building will be?
Do you know about, I'm asking Paul, it's probably-
I'm gonna say twenty feet.
Well, it would have to conform with zoning anyway, the heights.
I mean, we're not-
Whatever it is.
I will say, as far as the size of the building, the, the proposed coverage of the building is nineteen percent, where the seventy percent is, is allowed.
Okay, and so, just so I can understand, so there's gonna be open lot sales, that means they're gonna sell vehicles?
That's correct.
Then, they're gonna store vehicles?
That's correct. It's the same thing. Sales and storage and sales are, are under, yeah, it's, it's one under the bylaw.
Okay, and then they're gonna repair vehicles?
They're not, yeah, the, I wanna make it clear that it's not going to be a repair garage. It's not gonna be open to the public for repairs. All major repairs will be done at the two major sites, one in Bridgewater and one in New Hampshire. Anything that may need a, you know, a twist or something like that could be done here, but it is not-
And it would be done inside the sixty-four hundred square foot building?
Inside, anything being done on an automobile will be done inside.
Okay, and then, there's wash, there's cleaning, washing, simonizing, whatever?
That's right.
And then car rental, right?
That's right.
Okay, so that's the total?
The retail issue, the two retail issues are rentals and sales.
All right, so, so you have, you're gonna have ninety-six, can you just show me where the ninety-six spaces are?
Sure, yes, it's, it's, it's within, within this area, so everything, not here, but everything there, that they, these total ninety-six.
Ninety-six spaces?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and with the Conservation Commission, have you filed anything with them?
No.
No, but we will, we understand that's required.
I'm good.
Thank you.
I have a few other questions. Yes, sir.
Just to take Paul one step further, the repairs that are done are not for the public, is that correct?
Correct.
It's only for their, your fleet, basically?
Correct. And like Mr. Hilliard said, we, we do them off-site, that's our major.
I know that site very well. My office is on Access Road, and I have a lot of complaints, but not about this.
Right, good.
About everything else there.
Just for the, just, you're all, I don't mean to interrupt, I followed you, just to clarify for these people, you're not doing like oil changes?
No, 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 no oil changes, no gasoline.
And all the vehicles are new, they're, they're still under warranty, we do warranty work at our service centers, which are in Bridgewater and in, in New Hampshire.
Just nothing that could propose an environmental happen at all?
No, no, everything's done off-site.
No.
Sorry, I actually interrupted.
No, no, that's fine. Like I said, I know the property very well, so.
Mr. Jim, Jim, I'm assuming that you'd do it now, but I don't see it, maybe you're not gonna do it. Request for any outlandish size signs, signage is gonna be given in the form?
Any signage we have there would be within, conform, conform to the bylaw.
Conform to the bylaw.
And if it doesn't, we have to come for variance, but we have no intention of doing that now.
Thank you.
Although we could have something that would be thirty-five or forty feet high, like Ernie Box, that you could see from the rotary. I'm kidding.
People will believe that, Jim, come on, it's time.
Okay.
All right, so, again, questions from the audience, more the welcome to ask whenever you want. The only thing I, like I said, the only thing I ask is keep from you.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Let me start with the woman in the back, I promise her. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, just your name and your address, please.
Sure, my name is Pam Carpenter, my address is 549 Naposet Street. I'm the director to the property, where I've worked for thirty-nine years. So, I've seen the evolution of businesses in that area. First, I just want to thank Attorney Hilliard and his accompaniments for the additional information, and for having written me a letter giving me the opportunity to contact him directly. I didn't contact him, I don't want to minimize my interest in this, this issue. I considered that since it was just a few days away, I'll wait until the actual meeting night. Although I wasn't the one to spread the rumor about the possibility of opening up the street, I did wanna comment that I had spoken with Mr. Spiegel before he had provided any of the documentation, or submitted anything for his plans for the property. He had just purchased the property, and he wanted to talk to me about utilizing the paper street next to my house, which is a right-of-way for me, and it was intended for the parcel of residential land directly behind my house. So, he wanted to have a conversation about using that paper street to access whatever it was that he was intending to do with the Cap World property, and the other property that he purchased, which goes behind all of the houses up Naposet Street. So, one of the things I wanted to ask was, since the plans seem to be quite different from that which was originally presented, and that was discussion about apartment buildings, residential places, and I had also mentioned to him that the land directly behind my house, and I assume all the way up the street, was zoned residential, it was not highway. So, why has this changed into usage that is quite similar to the current usage? That's number one, and number two, a comment is, I definitely would like something written that that right-of-way that I have, and I've been using for thirty-nine years, is never going to be used for access to any of the highway B property, because I lived about ten years with eighteen-wheeler trucks sitting in my yard, idling at four o'clock in the morning, waiting to be able to access the nursery that was there. So, it had plants, and I would wake up every morning, I don't need that property, that piece of land ever to be utilized during my lifetime, or that of my children. And then my next question is, what are the plans for the land? I know it's not the focus of this meeting, but it's a sequel to it. What's being considered for the property behind all of the houses that extend up the very short Naposet Street Extension?
The only problem with that question is, as of now, there's nothing.
I know.
So, unfortunately, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be able to address that. I'm only gonna be able to address the issue that's at hand.
Okay, well, I didn't know if there was something being considered, because, again, with my conversations with Mr. Spiegel, there seemed to be something that was in, in the proposed state. And I had also come up here to have some, you know, conversation about what was being planned as well, because, again, I'm extremely concerned. One other thing I might as well say while I'm standing here, is the fence is in horrific condition, okay? My son repeatedly, my eighty-eight-year-old father, has tried to, to write that fence. In the last few storms we've had, it's blown down. Jack has done a fantastic job trying to, you know, spin straw into gold, if you will. It's unfixable.
Right, that doesn't sound like it's gonna be a problem getting the fence taken care of.
Right, right, so, please, that needs to be addressed ASAP. And the landscaping, you know, I maintain it, I don't know, I don't know what, you know, there are people who live, you and, I don't think she's here.
As far as the landscaping goes, once the fence is repaired, anything on the other side of the fence is not gonna be his property, I'm assuming, so, I mean, he's not gonna be responsible for that landscape, so.
Well, and that'll be fine, even though that landscaping was part of the original proposal. That was all written in, and that was in eighty-six, when we cul-de-sac the street. That was all part of the proposal with the rezoning of Zoppo's land that we had to do in order to cul-de-sac the street. So, we did switch some of the zoning from, I don't remember, I have the plans up in my attic, because I had actually had them done, so, but that was part of, that was done by the purchaser of the property, the landscaping, as part of the fence requirement.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make one comment?
Sure.
You mentioned access to the property, and as I think was indicated earlier in the hearing, the board, if it elects to allow the application, can restrict access to this property on Naposet. I gathered you were referring as well to some other property in the area. We wouldn't have authority to restrict access to some property that's not before us, or that we don't know anything about, but we could certainly restrict the access to this property to not occur on Naposet Street.
No, it was being considered as a way to access whatever was going to be placed on the Cap World premises.
Okay.
And what he was considering is, I don't know if you're familiar with the end of Naposet Street, there's my house, there's a driveway that goes like this, and then it turns to my garage. But he was considering, this driveway is not mine, it's, I have a right-of-way, and there's also residential land behind my house, and the reason for this, it's, actually, it's a paper street. I think it's, it's either State Street or Clinton Street.
Does it actually exist?
It does.
I'm trying, I'm just trying to picture, I was down there at night, but I'm trying to picture.
It is Clinton's.
It is, it's Clinton, okay, so I knew it was one or the other, I think State is probably behind, but Clinton Street. And the purpose was, the land behind me is residential. So, it was in the event that somebody purchased the land behind me to build, they would be able to use this?
That, that we couldn't address, because that's not before us. What's before us is this property.
Right, but this is still a way to access Naposet Street.
Well, all I'm saying to you, ma'am, is we, we, I don't believe we can address potential uses of other property in the area that's not before us. In the event that any such thing did come before us, we obviously could. But what we can do with respect to this property is prohibit access from Naposet Street in the event that we allow it. We can do that.
But this would be a way to access the property via Naposet Street?
Not to this, not to this property.
Yes, it would be.
Well, ma'am, if we prohibit access to this property from Naposet Street, period, then they can't do it.
Okay, ever.
Because that would be a violation.
Okay, but you could do it one of several ways. You could create a, a way to go into the property, going further down the street, turning left, or perhaps there's a segment of land that goes by your property, you could go down and curl, or you could go-
I'm not sure we're gonna get involved in something quite that involved.
But I just wanna make sure that-
But we can put in a condition, ma'am, I think we can adequately address the Naposet Street issue by prohibiting access to this property from Naposet Street.
Okay, then that would be a reason.
And it's my assumption that if, gathering the, the objections that exist, and they appear to be, I assume rather numerous and probably well-founded, I would anticipate, although I can't speak for the entire board, that if we do allow the, the application, it sounds rather likely that we will prohibit access to the property by condition via Naposet Street.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
The only thing I wanted was to bring to everybody's attention that this would be the simplest way to access that property, because it already exists. So, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience want to be heard?
Yeah, I, Earl Hockman, 592 Naposet Street. You addressed, already addressed, now Pam did, part of the concern, which was the access to Naposet Street from this property. Because I knew there was a paper street down there, and I'd hate to see that being used as a thoroughfare to, to, to get up to the rotary. The other concern I have is the traffic pattern for this. We've got people who aren't gonna be familiar with the area, rental, looking to rental cars or return rental cars going down that, off the rotary, for a quick right-hand turn into, to get to this property through, through the launch parking lot. You know, I mean, there's a lot of traffic concerns, there was a lot of traffic concerns when they first built that exit ramp off of that, going down onto Route One. And now, we're just gonna make it worse, but, you know, going through a parking lot with a bunch of kids who'll probably be running around, but.
Can I ask you, let me, let me, I'm on, I'm on your side, don't get me wrong, okay, but if they're coming, I'm just trying to picture, that's a confusing area down there.
Yeah, it is.
Now, you got, the Naposet Street Extension, you guys all refer to that as Naposet Street? No one lives on the, no one lives on Naposet Street Extension, right?
We do.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, well, it's referred to as Naposet.
I just wanna make sure I'm right on what I have here. You all worried about people potentially coming down there to try to cut through to get in there?
No, I'm, I'm concerned about them going to the rotary, going down the ramp, like they were gonna get onto Route One.
Yeah.
Then you've got that quick turnoff to go into Savers Parking Lot and the Launch Parking Lot. When that was first put in, there was a big debate about the, the safety concerns for that exit, because it was so close, and, and the ramp is so narrow, right? So, I'm concerned about kids up in that parking lot, because that's, Launch is the place where all the kids go to. But the other concern is, and I'm surprised nobody is here, from Access Road. I mean, most, a lot of the traffic, they're not gonna go down Route One, down to Ernie Box and turn around if they wanna go south. They're gonna go down there, and they're gonna get on Access Road and go up. I mean, we've already put the light compartment down there, and, and the traffic will get pretty heavy. And I'm surprised that, you know, nobody notified the people on Access Road that this was gonna be taking place, because if I lived on Access Road, I'd be concerned, you know, but.
I appreciate your concern, for sure. I'm not sure we can, again, we can only control what's-
Oh, yeah, I understand that, but, I mean, that should be based in the, your decision as to the, the environment in the neighborhood, and the safety of the, the residents in the neighborhood.
Absolutely, I agree with that. I don't disagree with that.
That's why I bring it up, yep.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Anybody else?
Kathy Hale, 582 Naposet Street. Not to be a dead loss, but regarding the fencing, I think that term should be squashed. We need a tall, iron, something very strong down there, because, you know, what's down there now is just ineffective.
It's ineffective because of the age of the fence, I would assume. So, they've already said- So they've already said they're gonna bend to that, so we're good with their, we'll put restrictions on it. How, how tall is that fence, six or eight feet?
Six feet.
Six foot.
Standard height.
The landlord, the previous landlord.
No, don't worry about what it's made out of, I don't care about that, but.
Well, we worry about it.
What height, what height would be satisfactory to you people?
What do you think?
What, what height of the fence do you want? Six feet, eight feet? It's not gonna be twelve.
Eight to ten feet, I would think.
Can't be ten. It's a structure of ten.
Can I just, can I say, if it's, it's a six-foot fence now, right?
It's a what?
Is it a six-foot fence now?
Yes.
And how, how many sections are there about? I mean, is it fifty, sixty sections of six-foot fence?
I wouldn't even measure again.
So, so if they replace the entire fence with an eight-foot fence, wouldn't that be, make a substantial difference?
Sometimes it's not wood.
Well, I don't think they, they do composite and all kinds of stuff.
Something that will hold up.
But if, but if, with the, with the, my question is, would the neighbors be comfortable with an eight-foot fence solid, replacing the entire thing?
And if it's replaced, it's gonna be done properly, it's not gonna be something that's gonna fall down.
I would prefer higher, in all honesty.
We can't, we can't go higher than that. We can't go higher than eight feet.
Eight foot is high.
Just, anything over eight feet in this town is considered a structure, as if it's a building, and therefore we'd need a variance from this board in order to get it, so.
Well, you're a lawyer, that shouldn't be any problem.
Well, it, it also gets down to a maintenance issue, because I remember when Zoppo put the fence in, it was a brand-new cedling fence, and then through time and plowing in the snow, which became like a zigzag, and I, I know what they're talking about, so.
I will say that this gentleman's client, not the enterprise, but the guy who owns the property, he's not into looking like a slob, from what I've ever seen with his dealerships and everything else, so I don't think you have anything to worry about maintaining it.
May I suggest something maybe helpful, if I may?
Sure.
If the neighborhood wants to appoint one person, not a committee, but one person that will work, we can work with and talk with and show the fencing and so on and so forth, we're willing to do that.
Somebody make a motion for Coppender over here, or?
Never be the first person to speak, you're gonna get stuck with everything.
Take on the responsibility, thank you, thank you.
You sure you want that, or you wanna give it to the fellow who was out to repair it and everything else?
Is that Mrs. Coppender who's speaking?
This is Coppender, yes. So you guys can talk after the meeting, so.
Yes, sir. Two quick questions, Donald Hale, five eighty-three DePont Street. I assume that this, whatever is done with the fence will follow the existing fence line?
Yes.
Sure.
There's been no change in the lot line, it'll be the same.
It'll be the same. And as far as employee parking, will be definitely included within your ninety-six spaces.
Absolutely.
Good questions. Yes, sir.
Nearest approved, five thirty-eight DePont Street. So my question is regarding the lighting, because we face right at the property, so you have some parking right along the fence, nearest to the, so yeah, we're there. So what kind of lighting is gonna be down there is my first question, and I have a follow-up, because you do have parking spaces adjusting to the fence.
Yes.
Did you not say, oh, the lighting was gonna be facing inward towards their property, not towards yours?
Shielded, it's gonna be shielded parking, it has a back shield to it, and everything shines into the lot.
And my guess is there's gonna be more lighting than there is right now?
There will be, yes.
And then the second question is, you know, where the entrance is from Route One, and there's signs, are you planning to put any bright neon signs?
Lighted signs?
Yeah. Just a regular.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. We, we do propose a standard sign in this location, which would, which is on Route One, which is typical of the signs and in accordance to the signs.
But nothing that's gonna shine at night, right?
No.
At night?
No.
It's not gonna be fifty feet in the air either, right?
No. It's gonna be with the code.
Because my, our bedrooms face that way?
No, I hear you on that, I know where you're coming from.
I can see that, so that's.
Yeah, no, no, I, I understood what you meant, for sure, but I didn't, I don't, it's a regular standard sign.
Yeah, whatever the, yeah, whatever the bylaw allows.
Interior illuminated LED light.
I don't, I don't think that'll be an issue.
We can put it on timer, shut it off, you set times, we don't, we're not opposed to that.
So we can, we can, we can work on that, too.
The other question, I know we've been talking about the fence a lot, I just wanna make sure the repair in scope is along the launch side also, you know, the line extending all the way.
Yes, there's a, there's, the fence loops around to the end of DePont Street.
And then goes all the way back.
And it goes.
All the way.
I remember it's, it came, it comes down, yeah, to here.
Here, and then there's a section, I think around six to ten feet at the end of that lot, which is not fenced.
Yeah, I did, I looked at it, and it needs to be, there's some trash there, it needs to be cleaned up.
So that side of the fence is also, I mean, it's in a, you know, worse shape than the front, so I wanna make sure that the entire fence is in scope.
Yeah, well, we can come into that, so we would, we would extend the fence, replace the existing fence along the driveway from Access Road, so maybe that would be a way to word it, that not only the fence surrounding the site, but also the existing fence that is along the access, or the driveway leading to Access Road, which would be down in here. Yeah, and I, I drove out there tonight, and there's a section that's fallen down, and there's an old refrigerator there that needs to be moved out of there, and an old TV, yeah, yep.
All right, thank you.
Two quick ones, the noise, we're willing to get out here, Alan Kennedy, five nine five, DePont Street. Are there any expectations for noise levels coming from the property?
There's nothing being done that would create noise.
Shouldn't be.
Yeah, I said, all the, all the minimal repairs.
Anything, yeah, indoors.
Theory or anyway, so no, I don't, I don't foresee that.
And then just to confirm, what is the maximum height for a building there?
I don't have the bylaws.
Probably thirty feet.
It's at least thirty feet.
And what's expectation, did you say? I thought you were.
I was guessing, I was saying, we usually have twelve-foot ceilings, so maybe fifteen-foot ceilings, so probably twenty-five.
No more than thirty?
Yeah, no more than thirty.
No, it wouldn't be more than thirty.
Yeah, it would, it would be, it would probably be twenty feet approximately, because it's only one-story building.
Twenty feet, okay.
That's what we're going, well, probably wouldn't be that.
Thank you.
Matt, this.
Probably wouldn't even be that.
Yeah, it might not even be that. It's just a single story, you need some rooms, room above for the mechanicals, but it's not, it's not a high bay warehouse building or anything like that, yeah.
Matt, this type of use is not a big trip generator, is it?
No, no, it's, it's not, it's a, no, I mean, it's typical for what you have in Route One, it's really, I, I, I totally understand the concerns of the neighbors, and I know this is a very important project, but it's a relatively small building, it's a sixty-four-hundred square foot building, it's not like one of the big dealerships that we see that has all kinds, and again, there's no, no repair, it's not like you're gonna have repair bays and people coming in like that, so you don't have that traffic either.
Just a couple more questions, one of them, yes, please.
Mel Brierly, five seven five DePont Street. I just need a little clarity.
Just did the name one more time, I'm sorry.
Melinda Brierly.
Melinda Brierly, five ninety-five?
Five seventy-five.
Five seventy-five, sorry.
I need a little clarity, because I had a conversation with this Mr. Spiegel, and as Pam did, and we actually had a great chat, and he made it crystal clear to me that on the backside of where my house is, and where Pam's, and that whole neighborhood going right up to the opening of the street, he made it quite clear to me that he was going to, well, first of all, he offered some of the neighbors fencing, like Pam, he offered you some, putting up fencing immediately, and he was going to, you know, do that, and, and he explained to me that he was the new owner, I said, fine, and that he was going to use what's there now, as far as I'm concerned, what's wonderful in nature, the little bit of land that we have, because land is, obviously, as we're all aware, it's so scarce in Norwood, but right now we have a little bit of, you know, bird life once forth, but he explained to me that that land that he purchased, he was going to use that land to put in hardtop or pavement, or whatever the dickens you wanna call it here, to park his cars, potentially, okay, because he was talking about this potential business. So I find it a little bit odd and peculiar and strange that there's, there doesn't seem to be any discussion about that piece of land that we're all abudders to, okay? Because again, speaking to what Mr. Hockman was talking about, the ramp, talking to Mr. Spiegel, he was talking about widening that whole area, which would be very conducive for him to have his cars drive right down into his brand-new, potential new building. So I, you know, Mr., I think it was Mr. Riley said something.
He's not, he's not gonna access, he's not gonna access this property through DePont Street if we prohibit it.
No, that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying.
That would be a violation.
That's not what I'm saying, with all due respect. What I'm talking about is, what I'm talking about is there's real potential to widen up, because I spoke to him, and he had the conversation with me, and he said to me that he was going to take all the trees we would go, in fact, we had the, his town engineering, and Pam and I actually came down to the town hall, and we had a conversation with Mr. Patrick and Mr. Hallid, something like.
Alkiotis.
Alkiotis.
Yeah, so I was gonna say something else, but anyway, so we had a chat with them, and so this was something that we discussed quite clearly. So I, to me, you know, there doesn't seem to be much information about the land that's going all the way up the street, backing our backyards, and.
The only problem, I, I know what you're getting at, the problem is that I can only focus on what's being applied for with us, we've already restricted, well, we haven't restricted yet, but we've, they've already accepted the fact that they're not gonna have access off of DePont Street, the only way to access this is maybe off of Route One or.
That's not what you're saying, you're saying, you know, that they're looking for some expansion, expansion of this at some future date that will run up behind their houses.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean it's gonna be allowed.
But he owns the land.
But he, but he can't just do whatever he wants.
No, I know that, but he'd have to come here, there wasn't chances that he already got the thing in place for getting.
Believe me when I tell you, if all you people show up when the time comes.
Thank you.
I don't wanna sit here telling.
I wouldn't wanna be sitting with you all, so neither.
Whatever it is, we can't do. And I don't blame you, too, I, again, I understand you wanna limit the, you wanna limit the commercialization of the area, I get that, and frankly, I agree with you, okay, but it doesn't even sound like that, that proposal's on the table. It sounds like the property owner, and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, he may have shared a little bit too much, just thinking off the top of his head.
He's making his loyals' job.
But now, all his money's gonna earn his money, believe me, so he's, I mean, I think they're realizing, and the best part about this is they're now realizing what you people don't want, okay, as a, as a possibility of what he may want, okay? So he knows, if he knows if he's gonna be met with, with a brick wall, you know what I mean, and I think he might reconsider, but unfortunately, you're gonna have to wait until the issue's at hand before we decide on anything in regards to that. Yes.
Yeah, I think we can probably come to the conclusion that you are doing what you can do. Mr. Hilliard is going to, I'm sure, refresh the other gentleman, the property owner, as to the feelings about more land that he owns behind me and everybody else, so that he should be forewarned that we will be here in droves when the issues come up that are appropriate to be discussed. But I understand where you guys are at, you have to stick within the confines of what's before you, and I think, personally, I think I've been relatively well-satisfied with the discussion that's gone on here so far.
I can also, I can also tell you personally, I, I don't know the gentleman personally, I've actually only met him, I think, twice, and that was because he came here for stuff. He, he's, from what I've seen of him, and what I've heard of him certainly, he, he's more than willing to work with, with the people.
Always start up high in your negotiations, if we figure it out there. But at any rate, I, I, as I said, I think as long as the caveats or whatever the term of art is in your decision, as far as any limitations, if they're carefully put in and made part of the decision, I think we'll be fine on this.
On this particular, okay, thank you.
Real quick, my name's Jeff Mansfield, I'm the current tenant, representing Capo. I just had a, wondering if you have an idea if this all goes through, how soon you're breaking ground or with the permitting process, so we can plan, too, so, those might question more for this gentleman.
I'm not sure, do you know that answer?
I, I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
So how soon would you be planning if everything's approved to start construction?
It would, hopefully, would be within a year.
Okay.
Hopefully, but like everything else, better laid plans, because we've gotta get through this, we've gotta go through the selectment for a Class II license, satisfy the Conservation Commission, and then there's an appeal period that has to go through twenty days, and when all that's said and done, if we're still fortunate to have Enterprise Rental Car wanting to go into this location, then we'll know more, you know, then we can fly for building permit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One more question in the back?
Dan Remy, six nineteen DePont Street. I just had a concern about the noise, if your house is operation at eight AM to eight PM, are cars allowed to drop off at midnight with a drop box, or is the parking lot gonna be gated and locked, or gonna come and go all night to drop cars off?
So we, there's gonna be gated, but they do allow after-night drops, we don't see a ton of those, to be honest with you, but usually customers come in, drop the car, put the keys in, and get it back home, it's that simple. So, I mean, we don't anticipate people hanging out and blasting music or anything. I oversee two hundred and eleven Enterprise rental cars through Main Mass, New Hampshire, and I can be honest with you, our neighbors, they enjoy having us as neighbors, so.
So car carriers to live in any of these rental cars?
Nope, absolutely not, nope.
Might even get a discount if you need one. That was my next question.
I'm not the guy for that. I think Kate, Kate might answer that for you.
Yes, yes, Kate.
Any other questions from the audience?
Big side is the entrance to this, maybe?
Sure, yes, the customer entrance is here, the handicap parking spaces are on this side.
Any other questions?
I just had one general comment, Mr. Chairman, if I might, only because one of the gentlemen in the audience expressed some surprise that he wasn't seeing people here from Access Road. The requirements of notice under the statute, among other things, that it be given to abuddas to the abuddas within three hundred feet of the property line. I did the casual measurement of the plan before us, and it doesn't look as though Access Road is in the area that required notice, so that might explain why they weren't here. They could have had notice, of course, from the publication of the newspaper, or if they drove by and saw a sign on the property, it might, but in terms of the, the actual notice by mail, they wouldn't be required to receive it.
Well, I would, I have, on DePont Street halfway up, I didn't get it noticed, the only way I found it.
I noticed in the file, there is notice to a number of people on DePont, maybe you're just beyond the line.
That may be, yeah.
But a number of people on DePont were notified.
Fortunately, somebody was nice enough to let me know.
Let you know, well, there you go, that's kind of the hope, it'll spread that way.
One comment, Mr. Hilliard, is this, is this entirely zoned general business?
Yes, no, no, it's highway business.
Highway business.
Yes, all highway, the whole parcel.
This highway business, there's no split.
Well, the, if they're, the only that comes into it is manufacturing, which is to what, to the right of the lot.
None of this parcel is.
No, no, this parcel is totally in the highway business, abutting residential, which are the folks here tonight.
And then I have Mr. Valerie?
Valeri.
Valeri, now, are you gonna be running this operation, if this was approved by this board, are you gonna be there on a day-to-day basis?
No, Kate oversees that property, so she's, she runs the South Shore, which includes that property.
Abuddas have, like, if you were concerned about anything, they, who would they say?
They could contact myself, they can contact Kate, they can contact the landowner, we're all local and available.
Thank you.
Jim, one final question, the caperole property, did that include the residential property that goes down the off-ramp with the sale?
Yes. So, that's the off-ramp, you understand, that's the frontage.
Right.
Yeah.
So I guess from just a general statement, and I'll, I'll shut up, but, you know, as a former member of the planning board, and Mr. Smith can speak to this, I, he's gonna have to thread a big-time needle if he's trying to do any residential up there, with turnarounds, street width, sidewalks, and the like, in the cul-de-sac or hammerhead in the back there, I don't know if the highway department would let them, again, we've talked about an access off the, the on-ramp there, or the down ramp, I just. Yeah, I just, I don't. Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't see how it could happen, maybe it was just a cold piece of property that was included in it.
Someone tried that several years ago, the Norwood's engineering department looked at it and said it would, it would be so risky, they would never allow it.
Right, so are there buildable lots back there?
When you say "back there," you mean up on Naponton Street? There are vacant, there's vacant land on Naponton Street?
Right.
That is residential zone.
On Clinton Street, on this road right here, this road right here. Are there buildable lots there?
There, there, yeah, yeah.
Sure.
There are lots, and they're in the residential zone, but you couldn't just run right down and build a building because of the access issue.
Access, yeah, and then, then again, would the lot of the, would the lot of the land be chewed up by the 40-foot right-of-way and the sidewalks and...
Oh, sure, if you, you know, if, if you were to build something there, and again, if we don't have any plans, you would have to go to the planning board, you'd have to get permission to change those paper streets to a roadway, and there's no plan for that now, and that would be a whole series of public hearings with the planning board in order to do that.
Thank you, thank you.
One more in the back?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Tim Revelies, 596 Naponton. Is there a traffic study been completed for this, and if not, is one going to be required, or when would one be required?
No. Well, that was why I asked, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that's why I asked if the traffic patterns, or is a trip generator, would be regenerating a lot of trips that might trigger that? You know, I'm not an engineer, I'd have to defer to Mr. Smith, but, you know, by being, having the access coming in already on a curb cut that the town debated long and hard in the trampoline park, I don't, I don't believe so, because it's not gonna, going on a public road. Is that right, Matt?
Yes, and a big factor in the trip generation is if we were to have a bunch of service bays, which we're not, but a typical auto sales company, they do a lot, they make a lot of their money off of the repair, so we've all been down to a deal or where there's, you know, a whole ton of bays, and that's where the main traffic generation is, because people are picking up their cars all day long, and that is not at all gonna happen.
Now, if Naponton Street was open, like they were, they were alluding to, then we might have an issue with the trips going down.
Oh, sure, absolutely, and, and this was, just for those who maybe haven't been around as long as I have, Naponton Street used to go all the way, it actually used to go all the way across Route 1 and to the other side, and, and my parents remember those days, and then, and then there was a time when Naponton Street would continue down further, and then I think, as I think you said, there was a lot of discussion to make this into a cul-de-sac and have it in there, so that's the history, and, and we have no, we, we don't wanna, we don't wanna change that.
The old Spock's apartment store, right, Jack?
It was Spock's, that, that would get us, it was Spock's, and it was, yep, yep.
Got the shirt there.
Yep, the Mr. Tux and the gas station, and, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
One last comment, I think this is an awful lot better than a high-rise condominium complex with issues about who's going to move in, how they're going to get north, south, east, and west of there. So I think we're ahead of the game, as far as the property owner has probably figured out that this perhaps is the best use of his investment, so far, anyway.
Another thing to remember, too, and I'm hesitant to even say this, but just to calm your fears, too, you mentioned the traffic study, you're not talking a Patriots game, you're not gonna have 100 people going in there at the same time, you know what I mean, it's gonna be periodic, so I mean, it's, I agree with this fellow, it is a great use of the land, you know what I mean, and I think it'll, it'll bring up the neighborhood, too, with the new building down there and everything else, and the new fence.
My office is on Access Road, and I've reviewed the plans, and I don't like anything that happened around me, like all new people. But anyway, I did go through it, and I don't see an impact, I really don't, you know, like I said, I've been down there for a lot of years, doing something when I do the building, so I'm still there in business, and I don't want anything to happen either, you know, that we congested or that type of thing, and I think it's a viable alternative to what's going on, and a good one, so...
One more in the back?
Just one more comment, I'm a little bit perplexed. The land behind our houses, again, I'm not trying to belabor this point, however, Mr. Spiegel, it wasn't just a question of buying a whole piece of land, it wasn't. The land behind my house was owned by one person, the land next to that was a different person, then there was another person, so it's different owners. So I would find it quite surprising if he didn't have some sort of a plan, because the effort that he put forth to purchase all of this property was more than just buying one piece of land that was all-inclusive.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, again, I don't know the gentleman, I can't...
I know, I just needed to get that off my chest.
That's, that's, that's fine, I'm glad you did, and it's a valid point, I'm not trying to negate it or minimize.
No, 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 I just needed to say it, it's awareness.
The guy will take your call, I believe.
Oh, I'm sure he will, he's very nice.
I'm sure he will take your call, if you wanna call him and ask him...
No, I wanna know the plan, and then I'll address it.
It is, unfortunately, I have to keep it within the scope of what we have in front of it.
Understood, thank you.
But, but believe me, I think all of your concerns have been heard, I will certainly tell the lawyer to make sure his client doesn't talk without his lawyer next time, will he?
But brings a good one.
It'll be, it'll be relayed back to him, and, and again, I'm sure he'll, he'll accept the concerns and understand it, and certainly work with it, okay? And then, again, I'm not speaking for him, but I don't know him to be that type of individual, and so, all right, so do we have...
Motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close, seconded, I'm gonna, I'm in favor, are all those in favor?
All right.
All right, we'll give a five-nothing to close the hearing. Do we have a, now, I have to, just before any motions are made in terms of, before we do, I know we're gonna do a discussion, but just make sure if any motions are made, we have to do it individually, 'cause there's three requests there, just to remind everybody on the board. So, any, any discussion of the board further?
We talked about a condition that this woman would be appointed, and my question that I would like to ask is, I know that we're gonna put in there that a fence would be, a new fence would be installed at no less than eight feet, but is there any room for some type of greenery or some type of barrier in front of the fence to go around it, or is there's no room?
It's on the property line.
I mean, I haven't really seen, I mean, I didn't look at it that closely.
The fencing is going to be very expensive.
No, I understand that, I understand that, but also, they have these, like, arbovites that grow 20 feet tall, and they're, I'm not saying they have to, you know, eight feet...
It's in the woods, though, isn't it?
I'm not sure if it can be done, but I wanted to just bring it up for discussion.
It can be done, because there's already shrubs in there, there are just not...
Close the hearing.
I'm sorry, we've actually voted to close the hearing, so I can't allow any more audience discussion, I'm sorry.
I mean, and again, that's what I asked about the vegetation, but, listen, I mean, an eight-foot-high fence is an eight-foot-high fence. Now, yeah, 25-foot blue spruce is, you know, seven feet or eight feet or 10 feet on center is gonna grow onto a natural hedge, but you're talking tons of money.
All right, well, that's what, I just wanted to bring it up for the board's discussion, and I understand the fence is gonna be a big expense. I'm just wondering if they could start with even a two- or three-foot, these things growing, maybe they don't have to be three-foot on center, but I don't know how many it would be, I don't know how costly it would be, I don't know if my colleagues feel that's unreasonable, but I feel like I just wanted to put it on the table.
Yep, no, listen, you were, you were our liaison to Mr. DeKalos at Subaru when they shrub the, the pine, and they're 25, and they're, you cannot see it.
You cannot see it from the home.
So, they started out as what, eight footers, seven footers, yeah?
I think we did six footers, six to eight, but I'm not saying in this particular case you would go to six to eight, these things grow crazy now.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go against you on that one, to be, with all due respect, I'm satisfied with the fence. I mean, you're talking, this fence has gotta be 200 feet long, you know what I mean, if it was, if it was something like that other project we were dealing with, the, actually, I don't know if you were here, but anyways...
So you think that there's too many shrubs to accommodate the fence?
I think it's unfair to ask more of what they've already agreed to, in terms of, in terms of cost-effectiveness.
Okay, I'd like to hear what the other, my colleagues have to say.
That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
I kinda agree with you, Tom, because I think you can go too far, Paul, and say, what, what, some redwoods, you know, that go 300 feet high, I think the fence...
The Green Giant, two feet tall, are not, are not that expensive, and, and they widen up to six to eight, you know, six feet, and, and I'm just saying, I'm only bringing it up because I feel like if that's their big concern, and if they, if you block that out completely, then, I mean, they're not gonna see anything. But they are not, they're also not looking at a building that's, you know, 35 feet tall either, so, I, like I said, I just felt that I can tell that I wanted to bring it to the table, so...
No, that's fine.
The one thing I think we do, we're on the same page on, the fence was eight feet, that was, that was what we agreed to, and that's what we proposed.
It's a big fence.
That is a big fence, but you know what, it's, it's, it's a six-foot fence now, obviously it's gonna be done properly, you know, and you're adding another two feet to it, where I was down at the end of the cul-de-sac, I don't think you're gonna be able to see anything, frankly, and the noise level's already been addressed, it's gonna be nonexistent, so, that's my opinion. The other thing was, can we also put, possibly put a, you mentioned that you'd be willing to put a timing on the light, the gentleman was worried about the bright light late at night?
Absolutely.
So if you close at 8 o'clock, can we, can we call the lights off at 8:30, or is...
We can, but, the, and the but is, for security, I'm telling you your job, but for security purposes, there is a lot of money in stealing, there are certain parts of vehicles these days.
No, no, I'm not saying it's gotta be total darkness.
So it's gotta be security lights, okay, okay.
But all the security lights without a doubt, I understand that. I think he was more concerned as if it was a, if it was a typical possible Route 1 sign with 50 feet height, is not gonna be the case.
Correct.
He doesn't wanna shine in his bedroom.
And we have no problem shutting the sign off at a certain time, the lights, like you said...
Security lights there.
We do need security lights, but yes.
Anything that would potentially have an impact on the house, but the security lights face him within it.
Correct.
All right, yeah, if we can, if we can put, if we can put a limit there for 8:30, if you're on, you're not...
Absolutely.
Everybody all right with that?
So eight foot, 8:30 on the light?
Can I, can I just, just one more thing about the drop-off, so this gentleman, someone brought it up, about a drop-off, is there any way they could, they wouldn't drop it off at a certain time?
Yeah.
24-hour?
Yeah, 24-hour drop-off, it's a convenience for the customers, again, they pull in, they park the vehicle.
You also have other, other Enterprise dealerships in Norwood, right?
We have one more, yes.
So couldn't they drop it off at that dealership?
I, I mean, if they, typically, if somebody picks it up from a dealership, we allow them to drop it another, the same, the same location. We like to keep cars, I don't wanna...
Don't you charge them if they don't?
Yes.
We, we have drop fees, we do, we, we charge different drop fees for different areas. Am I gonna go out and charge a customer that dropped a mile down the street? No, I, I'm not going to, but the branch manager at that is gonna have to send more people to go get the cars, it's, it's, you know, it's, they share cars back and forth, but if that car belongs to that store at that time, and they have a reservation for it the next day, and they know it's gonna drop, they're gonna need that car first thing in the morning. So it, it is a convenience for customers and for the business.
And the other restriction, the most important one, we haven't addressed it, is that there will not be any access off of Naponton Street.
Correct.
To the...
Correct.
Or State or Clinton.
Well, they sell one and the same.
Well, it says State, though.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, it says State on the map, though, generally.
Yeah.
So that's State Street?
Yeah.
So State Street, Clinton Street, which are paper streets?
Paper, yeah.
And Naponton Street, there'll be no access to the facility?
Right, no pedestrian access either, no gate or nothing, right?
Yeah, all right.
Okay, fine.
It's a pretty, pretty bad...
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
And then also wanna add to it, and you're good with it, Jack?
No, I just think of the old days, the ice cream place where the gas station was, you guys, was it lights, ice cream place? They'll be carried to the same girl.
Motion, no, motion to approve with those three stipulations?
Are we talking about just exterior lights with this restriction?
Uh, what do you mean?
I think the light that he was primarily, the gentleman behind you was primarily concerned...
It was the sign out there on the, on the island.
The sign itself.
You could hear some security lighting, you know?
We do need security lighting, inside and out.
But they've said that much, but the lights that were gonna be turned off, what are we talking about?
So usually, if there's a forehead of lights, we shut all three, but one off on each forehead. I don't know the design of the, the lights, I haven't seen it yet.
It may.
Yeah, but we, but we designate certain lights in certain areas, that we keep away from community, we, about communities all the time, I mean, they're our customers, so we're not gonna go ahead and shine lights in there.
Yeah, right.
You know what I mean, I mean, yeah.
Reminder is gonna be...
This is your biggest weapon, though.
In the minutes, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Sure, yeah, but we are gonna leave some on for security, and again, if, if people, there's gonna be a designated person that they can contact, that we will work with them, and, I mean, there has to be some reasonality behind it, but reasonability, I should say. But, yeah, we all might work with the community, though, again, they're our customers, so...
Right, all right, so we, you're gonna, well, I don't even think this concerns us, but you're gonna deal with Mrs.?
Coppender. Mrs. Coppender, yes.
You guys go work it out.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so there's a motion to approve with these three, with these three, I'll do the first one first, so I want, there's a motion, is to approve the special permit for the D1, the special permit for the open sales and storage of automobiles first.
Yes, and then the, the, the three stipulations go on the second one, I believe, right?
Go on the second one, for the auto repair services conducted within the building.
Or does it matter?
No, it doesn't.
I don't think it matters.
At the end.
Yeah, I don't think it matters.
I think it's a general condition.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, we'll go, so we'll just, you know what, just tack 'em on to the first one. So the first, so the first, there's a motion on the floor, special permit for, special permit for open sales, storage of automobiles with the stipulation of no access from Naponton Street, the timing of the light for the sign to be off by 8:30 p.m., and no access from Naponton Street, State Street, and Clinton Street.
And the fence.
And the fence to, yeah, and the eight, and the fence to be repaired, the fence to be replaced by an eight-foot fence. So is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right.
Who's making the motion?
I did. Becky.
I'll make the motion as you recited it.
Okay, well, all right.
Go ahead, then, that's fine, yeah.
All right, so Phil did the motion, not Pat, and it was seconded by Jim, so all those in favor of that?
Yes.
Aye.
All right, all right, that's a five-nothing. So second motion, I'll entertain, special permit for auto repair, services conducted within the building, washing and cleaning automobiles, limited to vehicles sold on premises.
So moved.